Um, I was just, so this is per the MDE. When was this enacted, so to speak?
So, the original federal regulation was in 1974.
Seventy-four, yeah.
We're the Safe Water Act.
And then, we've been getting inspections probably forever, but for whatever reason, MDE never notified the town that we need it. I don't know if we have a new inspector or not, but it's just something we have to do now. And it's like one of those check boxes that we have to do.
We're overdue. They were very surprised that we did not have one.
Most businesses and stuff with six-inch or four-inch water connections usually have backflow preventers and stuff already on them. I don't know how they got, don't have it on them for the bigger businesses in town, but I guess we do have some, since you have a list.
Yes.
If you have a sprinkler system, you have a backflow.
Right, and the new houses that have the sprinkler will have them.
Correct.
So, this has been a requirement, are you telling me this has been a requirement for forty-seven years? And now it's just brought to our attention that we're...
Well, I don't know that it's been a requirement since, but it stems from the federal requirement in nineteen seventy-five? Seventy-five?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Oh, seventy-four, sorry, I was thinking seventy-two.
But it has been in place for a long period of time. How long, I can't tell you, but they were very surprised that we did not have one already.
It's just paper.
Mr. Ritz, I'm not going to hold you responsible for this.
It's always been common practice for backflow prevention.
I'm not going to hold you responsible for this.
Most of the new, according to our new, we do require sprinklers in our new houses and dwellings, so they'll have it anyways.
President Sweeney?
Yes.
Would you be comfortable hearing an inquiry from the public related to this at this time? I don't know that they signed up for it, but I know there's...
This is all, is this informational? Are we supposed to vote on this tonight?
This is for voting tonight.
This is for consideration.
I don't have any problem with anybody speaking on it. Would anybody in the audience that want to speak on it? Yes. I think he said they had a list already.
If it's a change to your water infrastructure, that would require change probably, and Dan can correct me, change to your piping.
Okay, so that's, this is the first time I'm seeing this. Is this, it's all in there? I just haven't read it, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
The part about significant, right? The details of what, who says what is significant? What does significant mean? And is it in the, I'm sorry, I just received a proposal tonight, so I didn't see it, I haven't seen it prior. I'm just curious, who determines what significant is?
Wait a minute, um, just speak up here.
I'm sorry.
My bad. Just curious if it's in the language.
Our, we'll go out and consider, we'll see if it's significant or not.
Okay.
Imagine that's how it's going.
Correct, it would be a staff determination, but it would be things that would change your water flow, would change how your piping is, and Dan can add to that.
Okay, Dan, you're pretty much the guy to determine significant.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
If I was adding a bathroom, that's significant. If I was putting a toilet in, that's significant. What else kind of things are significant? Or that's not significant?
Dan, can you come up here and tell them what's significant?
Every time you do any kind of plumbing work, I would like to have one installed, because it doesn't take five minutes to put one in. And for the protection of the water system and also the town, I would say anytime a plumber's in there doing major plumbing work, I'm not saying redoing the whole house, like putting valves in, that would be an excellent time to do it, because your plumber's there. I mean, I'm not saying go out, call a plumber right now, go get one installed, which we wouldn't object to that, but you could.
Is there a specification of which type of backflow preventer you would, or is required?
There's a, yeah, there's a list in the figures that shows you which is preferred by MDE. Twenty-six and twenty-seven. And this is directly from MDE.
Mr. Schematics.
And this will be on the website for...
It will be in the code.
Yeah, and all the ordinances are also posted to the website, and they could obviously call, and your certified plumbers are going to know...
What's approved.
What's approved also, and if they don't, they can always call the office.
Do you have a list?
Yes, I do.
Good. We have a dry sprinkler system.
We'll be in contact.
Okay, good. Because I don't know if we have one or not.
All right, um, is there any other questions?
Suzie has a question.
We have one. Anybody else want to come up to speak on the ordinance? I don't know if we have...
All right, as a business owner and as an apartment building owner, sorry, but I don't understand any of it. If you just say that the plumber comes and he has to put that valve on where your water's going in and out, that's not a big deal, or are you saying that if they come and inspect and they say your pipes aren't right, or you need different piping, or?
According...
If they go to from a sixty-dollar job to a six-thousand-dollar job, plus you have your permit to ask for it, and another permit for this, another permit for that, so that's my questions, and I'm totally lost. And my second question is, are you guys actually going to vote on something that you really haven't had a lot of discussion on?
That's a great question. I'm not comfortable in voting on it tonight. I was going, I'm voting no regardless, because I have another question to follow up with this. We've, this is something mandated from the MDE, I don't know how long it's been in the works, but all of a sudden now, it's like, do we have to do this tonight? Are we going to be penalized if we don't? Because we haven't done anything for such a long time.
It's the same, it's just a plain language thing again.
It's difficult to come up with good questions over the course of three or four days. I admit that, I agree to that.
Kathy?
First off, this is written by MDE, this came straight from MDE. So, that's, this is their language, this is what they require. Two, we will get fined if we don't implement it. I don't have the deadline in front of me, it's on my desk. I agree, it's long and involved, and you should read it and should understand it, but it's something that we're going to have to pass, whether it's tonight or at the next meeting. And we can't change, I mean, it's what MDE requires, can't change the language.
You can't put it in easier language?
You can't make it into simpler language?
It's the MDE requirement. This is the, this ordinance here, all your municipalities will have, in the state of Maryland, will have this ordinance in their code. Town of Middletown has this exact same one.
Has all the towns complied with the ordinance yet?
I know, I know Middletown definitely has, I did speak with them.
I mean, from twenty town and all those, there's a lot of other little towns in between here.
I don't know, we haven't checked with all the municipalities, but when MDE tells you, you have to do this, or we're going to fine you, we're going to do it. And we took the language straight from MDE, and that's what we've presented. I don't know that if they would accept anything, because they're going to come back and look to see if we passed it. If they're going to accept anything less than what they recommended, I don't know if they would or not, and I don't, you know, I don't know, do we pass something that they didn't recommend, and then six months down the road, we're going to have to bring it back and change it again.
Can we have, let them know that we're having meetings or hearings on the process? You know, that we are talking about it, but we just can't bring it right up, because a lot of the public hasn't even heard that we were going to do this yet, especially the businesses.
The businesses will have ninety days, I don't know if that helps at all.
Ninety days between when we pass this, or ninety days now?
When it's passed.
Right, and...
And it's not all businesses. It's, we have a list of twelve to fifteen, and we're one of them. But, that's what Kathy said, we're mandated.
Is it possible, whether we pass this or not tonight, to have a layman's version of, because the whole code book is so confusing, and it's so prohibitive, and it isolates people in our community, they can't read it and understand it. It's a boggle of words. I mean, just in general, it's not accessible to people, our whole code book. Is there a layman's version of this? Oh, God forbid, I was getting chickens in my yard. To disseminate what I needed to do in that code book was nearly impossible.
Well, I think that's why we have staff, though. I mean, staff is here to interpret and to present what the message is. And I don't know that they have much latitude in this, where if they interpret something, it's not, they're going to be out of bounds with what the letter of the law is based on what MDE is imposing on us. But the one thing I think that might benefit us regarding clarification would be identifying the types of activity in a house for plumbing repair that would be the threshold for when to install this, for a household or for a commercial entity. And what I'm thinking is, that's not within our skill set, based on, we're not the one who's making this dictate. So, I would suspect it would be in our best interest perhaps to go back to MDE and maybe say what their view is. Unless, you know, Mr. Fissell, you're comfortable with that? Like saying that, you know, this should be our cutoff, you know? If it's a repair of this nature, from this type, you know, like literally make a grocery list of what would cause this to be required in that repair. So, for example, if we're replacing a toilet, no, it doesn't have to happen. Or if we're replacing, you know, ruptured pipe, yes, that would be the time to, you know, that would be the time to do it. Like, so we have some clear vehicle to kind of help staff, to help you, and to help the public understand when it's going to have to happen or not. The other piece I would suggest is, and again, Commissioner Buckman, if we can guide our community, and ourselves, to go to staff and ask, I don't get this, could you guys clarify this? It's another step, but it's that transparency of the process. Like when the wastewater treatment plant was put in front of us, it was, it was thunder and lightning, like suddenly we are now obligated to invest in thirteen million dollars of new infrastructure, in which we have no say whatsoever. It's very top-down, and that's what this is. And our community will suffer mightily in expense if we don't comply with what's being asked of us.
I'm not saying that, I just, we have concerns out here, people are looking at us with concerns, and one of those concerns is, if I hire someone to come in, you come and inspect it, my house was built in nineteen fourteen, are you going to see other problems? And now, you're in my house, and you're going to say, now, this is wrong, and this is wrong, and this is wrong. Now I have to sell my house because I can't afford to fix the plumbing, for example. Go ahead.
The only thing I will make comment on, if I go in the basement, would be the backflow preventer, meter valves, and a sump pump into your service system. Other than that, I do not make any calls, I do not presume to be a plumber, I do not presume to recommend to you what kind of pipe the plumbership would in, how he should do his job.
Does that satisfy?
Commissioner Ritz?
I guess, all I was asking for was clarification, is it just that we need that shut-off valve between the...
The black backflow preventer.
Or is it...
No, you need a check, well, they call it a check valve, it's a backflow preventer, but I call it a little check valve. The residential's will be a little check valve, which opens and shuts, has a little flapper on the front of it, when you use the water, it opens, and when you don't have pressure, it closes, and won't allow anything to go back into the main line when the system is down. See, you have a breakage or anything, it will shut when the pressure's on.
It just wants the water going into your house and not coming back out.
That's simple enough, all we're asking for is simple words.
I know.
Yeah, uh-huh. And the businesses, you have bigger ones, so if you have a four-inch line or a two-inch line, they're going to be bigger.
We have lots of lines.
Yeah, you have lots of lines.
He's wonderful, like he was explaining, he'll come out and he'll help you out.
It'll be right where the water...
Comes in the house.
The main thing.
Or building.
Commissioner Ritz?
Couple of things, to touch on what Commissioner O'Donnell was saying, town staff interpretation, I agree with that. Unfortunately, that doesn't always work. You might have somebody in one position interpret things one way, and then a few years later, it's interpreted another way.
True.
And I understand the intent, you know, it's passed down from the MDA, MDE rather, it's MDA, that we are required to do this. I'm not arguing that, and I'm not trying to make excuses. I wasn't feeling a hundred percent this weekend, so I wasn't able to devote a hundred percent to looking at this, so... If we could put this off one more month, I would be greatly happy with that, I'm going to recommend that, but ultimately, I understand, you know, the whole intent, I'm not arguing that, I just don't feel a hundred percent comfortable in voting on this this evening.
Commissioner Buckman?
I don't have anything to say right now.
Commissioner Hall? I just want to make sure that Ms. Glass felt that she had her question answered to her satisfaction.
Somewhat.
Okay.
Somewhat, it just depends on what they come in and decide what you need to do. It could be a small job, it could be a big job. You have the health department come in and they say, you know, the spooked site drains, things like that, and it's, one time they come in, it's one thing, and we fix it, and the next time they come in, it's a different person comes in, and it's a different thing, so it's just...
For the town that would be, usually comes in?
I just wanted more clarity, and so I don't have to pay...
Checks, will it be Dan who'd be going in?
Every year to have a check.
Yeah, or Jimmy?
So, it's just local, we're not going to get to health.
It's just, for us, it'd be Dan coming in, or...
No, yeah, no, I realize the health department's not involved, I'm just saying that it's, you have different things.
It's a similar experience you're worried about.
We don't want to comply, we just wanted, I just wanted more clarity of what, I just couldn't understand what you were saying.
I hope that helped.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you, sir.
We have to get one of these for the big, our big water plant on the mountain, too, don't we? Backflow preventers. Don't we have to get one of these for the, for the lake water into the...
We put backflow preventers on everything that we do.
Yeah, no, I mean, if... Right. What do we do with the, with the lake water going into the water plant? Which we, I mean, do we, we need, do we have a filter system on that? I thought we were talking before. Yeah, right, which we have too, that does now come in. Yeah, we have them too on our new plant, which doesn't allow the lake water and stuff to go back in, and, you know, shuts it off and brings it back in. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Glenn?
No, excuse me, not so much a question, but I'd go with Commissioner Ritz and Commissioner Buckman, I just personally, I mean, this is a pretty detailed document, I'd feel more comfortable actually tabling this for one meeting, advising all of us on the town's, you know, the commission board to read through this, come back. I mean, I understand there's a deadline, I understand there's a deadline, but read through this document between now and April, and then vote on it at that point, after we had more time to actually read through it in the details. That's just my two cents.
Is staff comfortable with that?
I understand there's a deadline, I obviously don't want to violate a deadline or have any penalties for the town.
I don't know what the deadline is off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay.
I think if we showed good faith effort, I mean, I'd like to think that they wouldn't do anything.
Give us a little bit of time.
Month, maybe? Another four weeks. Review through the language.
When did the MDE warn us?
My email's back on my desk. I believe they were out, was it end of December, beginning of January? Or is it earlier than that? Of January?
Oh, well...
I think it was before that.
So, we're not even two months into that, I mean...
I need a motion to either accept the ordinance or to table it.
I'll make a motion to table the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Ritz. Any other questions?
Mr. Sweeney, do we need a comment when to bring it back? I'm sorry, do we need to identify a time to bring it back?
Yeah, wait till Kathy gets done.
Okay, sure.
Just to, to address the confusion of it, one thing that we are trying to do with our website, and we've done it with several aspects of the code, in particular, there's a tab on the website to how to understand your water bill, because we all know our water bills can be confusing at times. Once this is passed, what we can do is create a tab on our website that breaks it out and puts it in layman's terms with the photographs and all the additional information that we have. This isn't going to be the only thing that is seen, but this is what would have to be passed to satisfy MDE, but that's what we can do on our website. So, it is easier for people to understand, I understand it's confusing, I've had a chance to read it for the past two months, so those are efforts that we can make to help it, you know, to be more understandable for people. I'm going to check on the deadline tomorrow morning when I come in, and I'm sure they'll be okay with a good faith effort.
Thank you. Do we need a time, should we set it from May to first meeting in May?
That's your budget meeting.
I'd just say April personally, but...
April sixth?
April sixth.
April fourth.
Our fourth?
Is it the, right, that's...
Just one month.
Yeah, because if we have any questions, in the meantime, you know, we could inquire of town staff, it's just, it's kind of difficult to do that over the course of a weekend.
So, Mr. Sweeney, can I amend the proposal to include, am I ready? Yeah, Monday, April first, to bring this back to, to bring it back for consideration? April fourth?
April first.
April first is the first Monday of the month.
Right.
And there's no irony there.
I actually want to have a... No, no fools that day.
Okay, so, let's identify, that, let's, can we accept that addendum?
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell to table the, the, what is it, what ordinance it says? It's the adoption of the cross-connection program for April the first. Second, second by Commissioner Ritz, all in favor to meet the proposal, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
The same thing would be for the fee policy also.
Fee policy, come back that same day, too. So, I also need a motion for that, too, please.
I'll make a motion to bring back the fee policy in regards to the backflow preventer ordinance on April first.
Commissioner Buckman made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ritz, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, staff presentation of the proposed sign ordinance, section seventeen thirty-eight oh six oh, to section seventeen thirty-eight oh eight oh.
So, from the last meeting, I kind of got perspective that you'd want to side-by-side comparisons and, you know, contrast and comparison. So, what I did do, and I did put it on your desks, I did a comparison for the town sign code, current and proposed, I did put a bunch on the back table there for the public, hopefully that's a little less confusing. I'd also like to state that we did take it out of amendment form, this, for this meeting, to make it a little easier to read. It brought it down from fifty-nine pages to thirty-four pages, so it is thirty-four pages. There were seven pages of definitions, so basically, it brings it down to about twenty-seven pages of regulations.
Mr. Golden?
Zach.
Can I just all for a second? So, I'm not sure if you heard that or not, there are copies of this on the back table, if anyone's here to take a look at the sign ordinance, if you haven't picked one up yet.
You could take one, you could take them with you, too.
Take them with you, if anybody wants a copy of this.
We also have it on the website, too, we put it on Facebook.
You guys can follow along. Thanks, I just want to make sure I heard you say that.
Sure. So, first I'd like to ask if there are any specific questions from the last meeting? Does the board have any questions?
I do have one question.
Absolutely.
You had referenced last meeting that there was a Supreme Court case, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, which is the reason that motivated you to bring forth this new sign ordinance? Of course, there's also now other reasons, keeping modern and those sort of things, but when I read the, which was extremely long, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert, it was a town that was trying to censor a church's temporary sign, so how is that a motivator for, for a whole new town ordinance?
As you know, and I've seen you in the classes, and Commissioner Blanchard and Commissioner O'Donnell, that at these sign ordinances, at the MML conferences, and that's just one of the Supreme Court cases, or one of the court cases that they cite in the sign ordinance presentations that they have. And so, even though it's just, they regulated what was said on a temporary sign, it's, the purpose of that is to make sure that you're not basically discriminating against any signs in your code, not just your temporary signs, not just of a church putting up a sign, but any, you know, so that you're not discriminating against one business putting up this kind of sign, and one business putting up that sign, so it's all uniform. And one of the things that they kept going over in these classes is that this is the time we recommend municipalities review their sign ordinances, due to, one, the Supreme Court cases, two, the changes in modern technology, to make sure that their ordinances are, do not discriminate in any way against any type of sign, any type of business, or anybody that wants to put up a sign. So, it's good for one business in the same district, is good for another one in that same district. So, based off all their recommendations, yeah, Reed and Gilbert is just a small part of it. You know, it's not just that case, it's the modern technologies, it's the changing of all these other bits and pieces that have had it, and based on MML's recommendations, Jim Pickett, MML, their recommendations were, they gave us a list of ordinances that other municipalities are using, the one that came highly recommended is the one that the American Planning Association, and that's basically what ours is tailored off of. And that's the basic foundation of why this is being done, and you've got a sign ordinance that's twenty-one years old.
May I ask a question?
Commissioner Ritz?
Are you finished with that? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there.
Yeah, no, that's good, you're good.
I just thought of something, so, the Reed versus Gilbert was a unanimous decision regarding freedom of speech, if I'm correct, in that?
Essentially, it was...
My interpretation, so, my question, just one question is, what specifically in our current sign ordinance is in violation of the Supreme Court's ruling?
Well, there was nothing specifically in violation of that Supreme Court ruling, but it's to make sure that everything is uniform, everything, the standards are the same, that you're not, we never were discriminating against, we're saying, weren't saying a religious sign couldn't go up, or a political sign couldn't go up, but it was a matter of making sure, when you've got an ordinance that's twenty-one-plus years old, you want to go in there and you want to look at it and make sure that everything is conforming to not just this Supreme Court case, but the other court cases that have come forth. I mean, I'd be more than happy to email everybody, all the other court cases that they've gone over in these classes that they've discussed, just as recently as last year.
Couldn't a business say, I really like neon signs, and your new ordinance says, I can't have neon signs, therefore you're discriminating against me?
There's different types of illuminating signs, that's not, that's not the basis of Reed versus Gilbert, what you said, Reed versus Gilbert was about freedom of speech.
That's what he referenced last...
Right, well, that's how this all started, is Reed versus Gilbert brought everybody's attention to the municipality's sign ordinances, and that's how the whole discussion, I mean, I know that I've sat through two of the classes down at MML, talking about the sign ordinances, and there are whole lists of court cases over it, but it's not just the court cases, it's about coming in line with modern technology and the changing way of advertising.
Understood, but the whole Supreme Court case of Reed versus Gilbert, though, was not so much discrimination because of, you know, one party can have one sign and one can have another, it was the content of the sign, not the...
And they were saying religious discrimination was that.
Not the type of sign, not the, not the size of the sign, not where the sign's placed, it was strictly the content of the sign. I don't think it has anything to do with the current change, but, but there are other issues warranting the change. I believe one was Maryland, there was some Maryland law was referenced, what Maryland law mandates a change to our sign ordinance?
Who said that? Did we say that?
Yes, it was stated at this last meeting.
It was, I don't recall that.
I don't recall that either.
I don't, I'm sorry, I mean... I don't. I'm sorry. I mean, I don't recall stating that Maryland law mandated changes to the sign ordinance.
If you want input, I'll just share a thought. I don't remember Comar being referenced. However, I think we're trying to serve a few masters again, the same idea. Basically that we're striving to modify the sign ordinance based on the recommendations of MML. I think we're trying to be certain that when the sign ordinance comes, the side ordinance comes through as a board, we're trying to make it the most useful and perhaps less restrictive than what we've had in the past. But the other part is, I think the effort on town staff is to clean up some of the language that's ambiguous in our side ordinance in part. And the other piece would be to move forward with new technologies in mind in order to basically maintain downtown as a viable business and residential site. So I think those are the masters we're trying to serve. I, I don't recall anything about Maryland law, but you know, if you have a vivid recollection, you know, I'm not going to.
The term Maryland law was used, but then I also have heard MML, which I know is guidance. There's nothing. Not legally bound to, to.
You're right. No, we're not. But I, I think the premise is that MML is bringing forward what would be considered best practices.
Okay.
Does that make, does that add clarity?
It, it does. But then, then I, it makes me want to ask another question then. If we have neighboring communities that are about the same size of Emmitsburg, why are they not adopting these changes to their side ordinance as well?
Or are they?
They are. The Thurmont just recently updated theirs, and I actually just had a phone conversation with the town manager from Thurmont who said, "We didn't get it right. We're going back in to make some other changes." So they are doing it. Some municipalities aren't doing it, some are. I can't speak to why one municipality does something and the other one doesn't. We can only go off the information that's given to us. And this, you know, these are just recommendations that we've taken forth from other conferences. If you as the board don't want to do it, staff is just presenting you the information that we have and what is recommended from these classes that we've been to and from what MML has sent forth. That's all we can do. And you know, we said from day one, we're open to changes, we're open to suggestions.
I don't mind that we have a template, but I want to make sure that we are adapting it for our specific town. And I don't think it's less restrictive, especially even looking at the comparison, I think it's more restrictive and it's less accessible for people to understand it.
Well, I think if, and as Zach has done, if you see, it keeps evolving with the informations that's being put out. You as, say, I'm in the village zone, I don't need to know what other, every other sign in, say, the commercial zone or the institutional zone. I don't need to know what's allowed there. I can if I want to. But if I want to know what's allowed in my zone, there's a chart now that you can look at and say, well, this is allowed, this is allowed, this is the size, this is how many. And that's the purpose of these workshops that we're going to have, is to address these questions and address these concerns. And you know, the meetings that Zach has had have been very beneficial, not only, I think, for the businesses, but for town staff to have a better understanding of what the needs are of the town. Because we don't know if they don't come and talk to us. I know when the sign ordinances were done before, there wasn't a lot of consideration taken in the businesses. We're trying to make that different this time. Are we going to get it right the first time? Absolutely not. We're not going to get it right the first time.
Actually, I like the, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I keep jumping. I, I like breaking it out by, by zone. I think that's a really good idea. It helps to clarify things. So I, I think that I do like that.
That's what makes it bigger margin.
Yeah, it makes it a larger document.
This is, this is just all informational tonight. This is all, all for the, everybody's here to benefit and ours too.
I like the idea of the meetings coming forward too, with the businesses and residents. And hopefully there'll be some really good input from, from businesses on that as well.
And we've had some very, very good input from the businesses, a lot that are here. For example, neon signs is one of the main contentious aspects. But the businesses were willing to concede for a size requirement. So they can't have a fifty-foot neon sign. They're okay with the four square foot. So there's lots of good dialect going back and forth. And I think the businesses are really open-minded and I, this is very positive. So I look forward to meeting with them next month.
Personally, just all the different types of signs, and I know this is two thousand nineteen and we, Emmitsburg, maybe we're looking to be the, you know, cutting edge of sign ordinances. But it seems to me like there's just a, a lot of different, there are too many types in there that, in my opinion, is pure speculation that they might actually show up in town.
Well, I think that's what we were trying to do, because based, John Clapp, who has reviewed it, he's always taken the stance, if it's not in the code, it's allowed. So if somebody were to come in for a permit for one of these unique signs that are in here, we'd have to issue it. And then you want to change sign ordinance, then it's grandfathered in then. So yeah, we were trying to capture all the basis, so that when we adopt a sign ordinance, maybe we don't have to talk about it again for another twenty-one years. I don't know.
I can see that.
But that's, taking his point of view, that's why we try to incorporate everything.
I can see that side of it. That, that makes sense. But then we also, just recently, we had the trailer issue where we had trailers were prohibited in every single zone, and then we went and changed that. So it was something more restrictive than made less. So it could work the opposite way too. Just using that as an example.
And then so the Odd House, they have the, the old sign that they've had forever. I like that sign. It's very vintage looking. Why, you know, can we put that in there? Because they should be able to have signs like that. It's beautiful.
No, it definitely is. The Odd House would be grandfathered in and it.
But I mean, for new businesses, why can't they have a carved sign?
They, they would. They would be allowed to have any kind of sign. That is a projecting sign. And that is permitted in the village zoning district.
Okay, so then it doesn't need to be.
On the window?
Projects out from the building.
Projecting.
Yeah. Then why were we even talking about it being godfather, grandfathered, not godfathered, sorry. Grandfathered in if it was allowed anyhow. That confuses me.
So we're going to, that specific question for the village zone is something that we're going to talk about the next meeting?
Next meeting on the third one, in June.
In June.
As long as we're working and we actually make a good faith effort to talk to all of the businesses.
No, absolutely.
Get their input. And this, we're not going with this, this generic code. I'm okay with it as long as they are being heard and we are going forth encouraging new businesses and not making it impossible.
From, from day one, I stated at the first meeting that this is not in any way set in stone. We're not married to any of these numbers. So that's why we're working hand in hand with the businesses. And I'm glad that so many are here tonight, that they know that we're going to be having these meetings next month. And the mayor's daughter was actually the one who suggested having these, basically charrettes, back and forth dialogue, not just me spewing what it is. We're going to talk about what the current code says and what we're projecting, proposing. And they're going to hopefully have feedback and say, well, we want that a little bit bigger or a little bit smaller, or we don't even want that sign in our district. That's, you know, it's, we're a village district. We don't want a massive illuminated sign.
So why don't we, do we have any more discussion or are we going to get through this presentation?
That's up to you, sir.
I'd like to get through the presentation and then you can ask any more questions you want.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so tonight we're going to talk about three different things. It's going to be the general regulations, which is really going to highlight the illumination. And we're going to talk about on-premise and off-premise signs. So section seventeen thirty-eight sixty is the general regulations. This section includes specific information on sign location, sign materials and construction, sign area, sign height, sign spacing and sign illumination, which, like I said, we're going to really highlight sign illumination tonight, because I believe it's a hot topic. So the current code. So in fifteen sixteen thirty are general regulations. Internally lit signs are allowed in all zones except the village zone, where they are regulated per section fifteen sixteen eighty B four. It's a lot of numbers, but in the village zone, basically each business is allowed to have one internally lit sign per business on each road frontage. The maximum size of such sign authorized is twelve by twenty-four. And this is the only regulation on illumination in the current code. And that's it, period. So basically, you might be asking yourself, why do we want to regulate illumination? Let's use an example of why we're recommending this. So say the ABC company is a developer for Brookfield. Homes are slowly selling, but they want to sell the rest of the lots in the next year. They want to get them all sold. In order to do this, they want to install the biggest and brightest sign that they can get to attract buyers. The current code would allow them to install a fifty-square-foot internally lit sign. They could legally install the brightest bulbs that money can buy and have the sign lit all day and all night long. And there's nothing town staff or the board can do about it. The new sign code would set daytime and nighttime brightness standards and set hours of illumination from five AM to eleven PM or a half hour past closing, whichever is later. This would protect residents from obnoxious light pollution that they are currently vulnerable to. Let's do one more example. Let's say I live in Pembroke. My neighbor is adding a garage and the ABC contractor is doing the work. ABC contractor is currently allowed to install a twenty-four-square-foot internally lit sign in my neighbor's yard promoting his or her business while the construction of the garage is taking place. This sign again may be lit all day and all night long. It might be the brightest bulbs that money can buy, and there's nothing we can do about it. You may call and complain about it, but unfortunately, staff, there's nothing we can do. The new sign code would not allow for, allow illuminated temporary signs. The contractor would be allowed only a six-square-foot little sign. Yes, Ms. Buckman?
So those signs that, for Community Day that the, Thurmont puts out for Color Fest or Community Day, whatever it is, those are not legal? There's temporary?
The street banners?
Yeah.
No, no, no. We'll get that to the next meeting, but they won't be allowed to be illuminated. No. But they will be, to make a small story short, yes, they would be allowed in the new code. So please ta, turn to page fourteen of your ordinance, or it's twenty-two if you have the old amendment version. So fourteen, it's going to be, it's going to show this. Nice chart.
I'm sorry, I hate to ask you. For clarification, are we looking at page thirty, thirty of sixty-seven or?
If you're in the old amendment version, you're going to be at twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. I'm in the current packet for this meeting.
So you're going to be fourteen.
Fourteen.
Or fourteen, I'm sorry, of the code.
Page thirty-nine of sixty-seven.
Let me see. It's page forty-four. In your agenda packet, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I see it.
So it's going to be your big box there. Okay, so is everybody there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're there.
So this is the illumination summary table, which shows where illuminated signs are permitted and what types of illuminated signs are permitted in each zoning district. So all of the legal terms and sentences, which makes the ordinance long, it's all summed up into this. So if you have any specific questions on, am I allowed to have an internal illuminated sign? What kind of signs are allowed? It's right here. So just one page. So let's talk about, let's first talk about the four types of illuminated signs. They include internal illuminated sign, message center, external illuminated and digital display. Again, we're still on that same page. Okay.
Oh, permitted and not permitted.
So you're going to see on the, the table, there's going to be P's, which means permitted. N, P's means not permitted.
Okay.
And there's little exclamation points with.
Oh, I got you. Thank you, Tim.
Are you okay, Ms. Buckman?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. So internal illuminated signs. So as you can see, there's multiple pictures here. This is a light source that is concealed or contained within the sign and becomes visible in darkness through a translucent surface. Internally illuminated signs must be static in intensity and color. So as written, as you can see on your chart, if we go back, or in front of you, these will be allowed in the new sign code, in the neighborhood commercial, general commercial, office research industrial, industrial park, institutional and conservation and recreation, only if it's in the park or recreational facility. I'm sorry?
Not in the village zone?
Right now, we are not proposing in the village zone. However, we are having good dialect with the businesses and that's one thing they are requesting.
Mr. Sweeney, could you bring him up if, if you choose?
Come up to the podium.
Ralph Ireland, one oh seven two nine, Keyville Road, Emmitsburg. The Main Street and Seton are all in the village zone?
Yes.
So you're saying no signs are allowed except one external sign? I already got them out. That's what, that's what's proposed.
This is, yeah, that's what's proposed, but that's not written in stone. It can be changed.
I know it's not written in stone, but.
We're only talking right now only about internally lit signs.
Only internally lit signs.
Okay.
We're just describing the different types of illumination right now.
But the way that reads on that graph back there, nothing's allowed except one external sign.
Wait, look.
No, that's not correct. So if you want to just go to village for a second.
Okay.
As you see, the internal, which we're talking about now, it's not, we're not proposing for it to be permitted, but that is one comment from the businesses. Message center sign, which we'll be talking about shortly, not permitted. External, we are permitting that. And digital display, not permitted. So right now, any type of sign that would be permitted in that district would only be allowed to be externally lit, which we're going to talk about next, which is light bulbs going towards the sign.
Song.
Yep.
That's solely on illumination signs, not any other sign. That's all we're talking about right now.
Just illum, just illumination. We're going to get really deep into what signs are permitted and where at the next meeting or at April's meetings.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, where am I at? Okay, so next, we're going to do message center signs. So these are a type of illumination, changeable copy sign that consists of electronically changing alphanumeric text often used for gas prices displays, signs and athletic scoreboards. Message center signs, where permitted, are subject to the following requirements. They are permitted in the form of a freestanding monument, wall signs, both on and off premises, which we will get really in depth next meeting. When used as an on-premise sign, just as it is there, they shall not exceed fifty percent of the sign area for any one sign and shall not exceed more than thirty percent of the total area for all signs permitted on the property. So basically what that's saying is, just say for example, the Lower Allen Township, I would say that's approximately fifty percent, give or take a little bit. So the whole sign couldn't be message center, which is electronic. That's what that's saying.
Mr. Golden, for clarity's sake, looking at Lower Allen Township again.
Yes.
Is that considered one sign, the blue and white up top and the electronic below? Or it's just the electronic below and the proportion of the lettering in the electronic below?
All of that would be considered one sign.
Okay.
And it's only, you don't take, we don't take into consideration anything that doesn't have letters.
Okay.
So basically, all the stone would not be in the square footage.
Sure.
Does that answer your question?
It, it does. But I was, what I was really looking at is the digital device, the upper sign, that constitutes a single sign.
That's a single sign.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really what I'm looking for.
They're all single signs in those examples. Okay, so when used in the off-premise sign, message center signs may be used for fifty percent. So no message sign may contain text which flashes, pulsates, moves or scrolls. The content of the message must transition, transition instantly, and that's just for safety for visitors going down the road. So every, the owner of every message center sign shall coordinate with the local authorities to display, when appropriate, emergency information important to the traveling public, including but not limited to amber alerts or alerts containing terrorist attacks or natural disasters. Emergency information messages, messages shall remain in the advertising. Emergency information message, messages shall remain in the advertising rotation accordingly to the protocols of the agency that issues that information. So as written, the messa- as you go back to your chart, um, as written, message center signs would be permitted in the following zoning districts. Also, if it would help, I did put the zoning districts in front of you, um, the zoning map. These would be allowed in the neighborhood commercial, general commercial, office, research, and industrial, industrial park, institutional, and also at our parks, um, which is the conservation and recreation district. Mr. Ritz?
I have a question, back to that chart, basically the center of that chart, the brightness limitation for digital displays?
Yes.
Um, I'm not familiar with the unit of measure nits. I know lumens, things that, but, um, so business would have the sign, would it have some sort of certificate saying that the digital display is X nits?
We're almost there. If you can just hang in with me for one more slide.
We're on the same.
Couple more slides, yes, we are. Yep, we are.
Thank you. And is it calibrated?
Okay. So externally illuminated signs have an artificial light located away from the sign, which lights the sign, the source of which may or may not be visible to persons viewing the sign from any street sidewalk or adjacent property. So these are pretty common in your Village Zones, um, Gettysburg, New Market, they all pretty much allow these types of signs. Um, they're also very common in your subdivisions. So externally illuminated signs where permitted are subject to the following regulations. The source of the light must be concealed by translucent covers and they shall be a steady, stationary light source, shielded, and directly solely at the light. The light must be static in color. So for an example, right now, if it would pulsate, there's not much we could do, but this would make sure it's steady and it doesn't distract drivers going by. So as written, these would be pretty much allowed in every zoning district, um, the neighborhood commercial, general commercial, office research, industrial, industrial park, institutional, Village Zone, residential, and the conservation recreation at the parks. Any questions on that? Digital displays, the portion of a sign message made up of internally illuminated components capable of changing the message periodically. Digital displays may include but are not limited to LCD, LED, or plasma displays. Digital displays where permitted are subject to the following requirements. They are permitted in the form of freestanding monument and wall signs, both on and off premise. Uh, again, when used on premise, digital displays shall not exceed more than thirty percent of the sign area. So the one on the left, bottom left, that's about fifty-fifty, so it wouldn't be permitted. I just wanted to show a digital display sign. Um, when used on off premise, you could do that. Um, digital displays may be used for a fifty percent of the total sign area. Any digital displays containing animation, containing, um, animation, streaming video, or text or images which flash, pulsate, move, or scroll is prohibited. Each message must fit on one screen. The content of the digital display must transition instantly and not slowly. So the owner of every message center sign also, again, must coordinate with us. If we would have an amber alert, we would send it out to the list of businesses that we know do have these types of signs and they would be, um, asked to have the amber alert on their message sign. As written, digital display signs would be permitted in the following zoning districts, neighborhood commercial, general commercial, office research, industrial, industrial park, institutional, and conservation recreation, only if used at the park. So here's where we're gonna get to your comments, Mr. Ritz. So for hours of illumination, so signs on non-residential properties may be illuminated from five AM until eleven PM or a half hour to pass to close the business. Signs shall be, shall be set on an automatic timer to ensure compliance with this section. Message center and digital display signs are subject to the following brightness limits. Um, during the daylight hours between sunrise and sunset, luminance shall be no greater than five thousand nits, which an example is in the right-hand corner. At all other times, luminance shall be no greater than two hundred and fifty nits. So here's what you're asking. So each sign must have a light sensing device that will automatically adjust the brightness of the display as the natural ambient light conditions change to comply with the limits set here within. Um, luminance is a photometric measure of a luminous intensity per unit area of light traveling in a given direction. It describes the amount of light that passes through, is emitted or reflected from a particular area and falls within a given solid, uh, angle. The standard unit of luminance is a nit. I understand you probably, some of you may have never heard this before, but that is the standard illumination, um, uh, description, so. Are there any more questions on illumination? That's what I have for that. Um, we can go into more detail. Right now, the code prohibits anything other than, um, internally illuminated. So digital displays are strictly prohibited. Um, externally illuminated signs, they're not prohibited, um, but they're not regulated either. Message center signs are not allowed. So internally illuminated is the only thing that's, that is permitted right now.
With the new proposed or the?
In the current code, the only thing that's allowed, which is regulated, is the internally illuminated. That's it. That's it.
But if it's not there?
But if it's not there, then it's permitted.
Then it's permitted.
No, it's, actually, the message center sign and digital display signs are strictly prohibited.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because they're in, the current code is being prohibited.
As being prohibited.
Yes. I misunderstood. I thought you said they weren't in there.
Yeah.
No, no.
They weren't in there, then they would be.
You're correct.
Okay.
But they are strictly prohibited. Is there any more questions for the illumination? I know it's a lot to take in, this is...
Just generally speaking, the, if we're listing what we're allowing at a future time, can we create a phrase in there or a statement saying, "These are the types of signs that are allowed in Emmitsburg. So therefore, if a person comes in with a non-compliant sign, because it is not listed, it is now excluded." It's sort of the, the inverse of what Mr. Clapp had offered to us.
Catch-all, be-all?
Uh, yeah, we define what we're going to accept and, you know, if technology changes, then again, living, breathing document, we modify it as it's organic.
Yes, that's actually a great idea. It's catch-all, be-all.
Would that save us a whole bunch of heartache?
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's a question to ask John Clapp exactly how to word that.
Okay.
That we're protected, but I think, you know, that would be very helpful.
I mean, that, that way, I think we can maybe winnie some language down if there's a need.
It can cause interpretation problems though, too. Because if you say, "If this particular sign's permitted," and you, as a business owner, want to put a sign that you feel is defined as such, it would have to be written in such a way that, uh, it would have to be written in such a way that if it's not, you get it's open to interpretation, because it has to be clear-cut, because then they could, they could come back and say, "No, it's, that's not one of those signs, therefore you can't put that up there."
But that's it. I mean, the language in the ordinance is, is very explicit. It defines surface area, it defines proportions, you know, in relationship to other surfaces like windows, for example, or street frontage. So we already do have some really explicit language that we use for what signs are, how signs, how large they can be. The only thing we're not limiting, as we shouldn't, is, is the language of the sign, you know, what it's saying more or less. Um, and illumination, I mean, that's, that's where we are right now, if I understand it. So, so those limits are already in place, you know, in, that type of, we're already using that type of format. So I think what's being presented to us for consideration also has these very explicit definitions. So it would save us a lot of trouble and, and it would help the, the businesses, I think, so they have a sense as to, you know, what they can do and, and how they can do it. And, um, we, we don't find someone unfortunately investing in something that wouldn't be allowed. And if they do want to pursue that, then they would bring it to the board, like for consideration as a class action, as opposed to just their individual case. You know what I mean?
I do, I do. I, I, another point, I'm sorry to start off topic, I, I wanted to say too, positively towards the, the new, um, sign ordinance, the fact of moving it into, um, I think it's Title seventeen?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's the zoning. So if there ever was, um, an issue from an individual, whether it's resident or business that had a sign, they could bring it forward to the Board of Appeals, correct?
Absolutely. So right now, how it's written, you may not appeal any determination made by me or anybody else. Um, you can't make a, if your, you know, business is located back a really long alley, we can't take that into consideration. So that is a really good point. It will be allowed to be appealed to the Board of Appeals.
So, you know, regardless of what the outcome is with our sign ordinance, yeah, I, I like, I like that.
Sure.
Aspect. I don't know if that's an MML recommendation or...
It's, it's a standard procedure in the whole country.
No, I like that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more questions?
No, no, no.
Regarding illumination? So basically, um, when we say more business-friendly, um, this is more business-friendly, because, like I said, the only thing that's allowed right now is internal illumination. We're allowing three more, three more types of illuminated signs for our businesses to kind of step into the twenty-first century. So on-premise signs. So this is a sign whose message and design, design relate to an individual business, profession, product, service, event, point of view, or other commercial or non-commercial activity sold, offered, or conducted on the same property where the sign is located. This section provides regulation, um, for on-premise signs. It's very, very, very similar to what we already have. So not a lot has changed. Um, no portion of a wall sign shall be mounted less than eight feet above the finished grade or extended out more than twelve inches from the building. It's pretty much what we have now, it's for safety, so no one runs into it. Um, a canopy or awning sign must be centered within or, within or over architectural elements such as windows and doors. Um, no portion of a projecting sign shall project more than four feet from the face of the building. So incidental window signs, um, display pertinent business information such as the business hours of operation and credit cards accepted shall be excluded from the area calculations. Um, so we will not include that in the calculations. The lowest grade, or excuse me, the lowest edge of, of the freestanding pole sign shall be either less than four feet or greater than seven feet above the ground. And manual changeable copy signs are permitted only where integrated into the freestanding, freestanding wall or portable sign. Any questions on that?
What's a changeable copy sign?
So off-premise signs, so again, this is a totally new, um, business-friendly, um, section. Right now, businesses in Emmitsburg are not allowed to have off-premise signs. So this is an outdoor sign whose message directs attention to a specific building, or excuse me, specific business, product, service, event, or activity, or other commercial or non-commercial activity, or contains a non-commercial message about something that is not sold, produced, manufactured, furnished, on the premise which the sign is located.
Is, um, in the new ordinance, that will be permitted?
So in the new ordinance, we are, um, proposing billboard signs, yes, but in specific zoning districts.
Like that one, I mean, like Subway One?
Yes, so...
Or in our order that the man could put Antique Mall?
Yes, yes, sir. So for example, say, you know, we have, we're, our, our town fronts US fifteen, which is a huge advantage for our businesses. Right now, the Antique Mall could not, for an example, the Antique Mall or the Tattoo, um, place could not put a sign out there letting them know, "Hey, stop here, you know, we do have this and it is available."
Yes, thrift store.
Thrift store, anything. So it's a big disadvantage for our businesses and that's one rea- another reason why we're saying this is pro-business. So, um...
I had that Wendy's sign in the middle, though.
I'm sorry?
The Wendy's sign?
Mm-hmm.
Is prohibited.
It's prohibited now, yes.
Not in the new one.
In the new ordinance, would a sign like that Wendy's sign be permitted?
It would be permitted in specific zoning districts, which I'm about to discuss.
Okay.
Any, is there something else you wanted to?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay, sure.
I don't like that sign.
So for off-premise signs, um, are only permitted in the following zoning districts. So general commercial, which is along fifteen, office research and industrial, which is also along fifteen, and the industrial park, which is along fifteen. An off-premise advertising sign is subject to the following size restrictions according to the posted speed limit of the road of which the off-premise sign faces. So less than or equal to thirty-five miles per hour, um, there would be a sixty-square-foot area, uh, maximum. Thirty-six to forty-five miles per hour, a hundred square feet maximum, and forty-six to fifty-five miles per hour, which this would be along US fifteen, would be a maximum of a hundred and fifty square feet. The basis for this size limits included in this model is rooted from the research found in Street Graphics and in Law, A Planning Advisory Service Report by Daniel Mandekler, William Eldwald, and Andrew Bertucci. The second chapter of this book, titled The United States Sign Council Best Practice Standards, brings together research on the different variables that determine how large a sign needs to be in order to safely and accurately comprehend as drivers pass by on adjacent roadway. So basically, we, we want to help the business owners out and let them know what, what's gonna be effective for the passengers. Commissioner Buckman?
This off-prep, this sign shall have a maximum height of fifteen feet that doesn't include the pole that it's resting on?
It does include the pole.
It does include the pole.
Okay, so like that Wendy's sign?
That was more than...
Yeah, I'm thinking like the Burger King sign in Thurmond. To me, that looks like that. You know, it's like, I don't know, five hundred.
It's massive.
Oh, so...
Yeah. So in order to prevent that, that's why we are suggesting a maximum fifteen feet.
But don't we have a, like a Ski Liberty one right up here on our exit that's much bigger than that?
But that's not in...
It's not in our limits.
Oh, that's not town limits. I was thinking right off fifteen, but I could...
But you are correct, that there is a sign there. I don't know off the top of my head of what that dimensions is. I don't think it would be bigger than a hundred and fifty square feet, fifteen by ten, but it might be about the same.
It's taller than fifteen feet.
It's a standard billboard. It's, it's rather, I'm sure it's more than a hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's like twenty by forty or something.
We do have one, we do have one in the town. Or North Seaton.
We do, yeah. And they would be grandfathered in.
Has, uh, two, I think two, one for one way, one for the other way.
That's correct, mm-hmm. They would be grandfathered.
Is that the one, uh?
I don't think anything's on there once it was ripped off or something. I don't think anything's on there. McDonald's was on it for one dollar.
Okay, so off-premise signs may incorporate manual changeable copy signs, so they could, if they wanted to, I highly doubt they would, um, they could go up there every month and change the actual letters, but usually they will be, uh, electronic and illuminated. So the following illumination types, uh, are permitted, what we are proposing to be permitted for off-premise, uh, subject to the regulations in the illumination chapter. So again, message center signs, they would be allowed, digital display, external illumination, and internal illumination. And off-premise signs may also incorporate tri-vision boards. So I did miss a couple things here, let's see, slide forty-four. Okay, so let's see. Okay, so going back to the variables, I apologize, I missed this. The five variables necessary for determining the size of a sign include the veer reaction time, veer reaction distance, letter height, copy area, and negative space. So basically, the, the people that came up with the, the numbers for the sixty, one hundred, and one fifty, they, they just didn't come up with numbers, there was actually a calculation that came into the play, uh, scientific calculations, so. Okay, so off-premise signs shall be, so this kind of protects the community a little bit. Set back from the right away a distance equal to the height of the sign or fifteen feet, whichever is greater. Located no closer than twenty-five feet from any property line, fifteen hundred feet from any, from another off-premise sign, um, five hundred feet from any intersection or interchange, and one thousand feet from any property line abutting a public park, playground, religious institution, cemetery, school, or residential district. Um, you can have no more than one per lot. And every three years, the owner of the sign of these billboards shall have a structural inspection made of the sign, excuse me, made of the sign by a licensed engineer registered in Maryland and have, and shall provide to the town a certificate certifying that, that is structurally safe. Um, this requirement is only for billboards and off-premise signs. This will be for no other sign in the town.
Yeah, I think the Thurmond had one fall over.
And that's our concern, and that's the concern of MML and APA, is if these aren't structurally sound, they can fall over on a car, on a person, on a kid, and cause havoc and disaster. So we highly recommend that this would be in the ordinance for these off-premise signs.
Um, help me think about this a second here. So these are allowed on, on general commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Industrial park.
Mm-hmm.
And one other.
Yes.
Um, do those lots have that much space to put that distance and that?
They do, they do, it, it is, it's a pretty large distance. Um, and we may have to adjust that as needed.
I don't want the, the distance away eliminate everybody now.
To eliminate everybody, I understa- yeah, definitely. Okay, and also landscaping shall be provided at the base of all off-premise signs. And that's all I have for this meeting. Are there any questions?
One question and, and one comment, um, for, I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney, is this okay?
You're fine, this is discussion area.
Sure, okay, so the, the question I have relates to industrial park. Would a sign type be considered off-premises? Were it to be, say, a rectangular sign indicating tenants in the industrial park?
Yes.
Okay, so that type of sign regarding illumination type, requirements for that, like a low-to-ground type, illumination, external? Or if you could walk me through what the possibilities could be there?
For the industrial park?
Correct.
Okay, so everything would be permitted, the internal, message center sign, external, and digital display.
Terrific.
But it would be subject to those regulations of illumination and.
Space and.
On and off, yes.
Terrific, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Comment, and, and I'll, I'll say this, uh, open-ended. Um, I don't want to go warm and fuzzy on everybody, but, but here's my thought. Um, having sat on the board the last time the sign ordinance came forward, uh, I really felt there was a far different atmosphere, not between business and, and, and myself, but business and town government. Uh, I think, and I hope, you find this far more user-friendly and far more inclusive, and you see a stronger outreach. Uh, every effort was made last time to do these things, and there was certainly input from the community, but this is so much better than it had been last time around. So, uh, I, I'd like to, you know, pat you all on the back on that respect. But also I think it sort of reflects the difference of the board, uh, executive, and town staff. Uh, we've gone to great lengths to try to be, well, I'll say it in my view, servant leaders, like working for you but trying to guide our community to the best things. Um, and it feels like we're going through an improved process so far. But, uh, I, I don't know that we were totally in the stone age last time, but I think we have more people engaged, and, and I hope that's a reflection of what we're trying to do for you. So, um, that having been said, I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight, you know, pro-con wherever, but being here helps, so thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
Um, no, I'm good right now, thanks, sorry.
I'm fine right now, thank you.
Mr. Blanshard?
I'm good. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
We're good to go. I think, uh, I want to congratulate our staff, I think they've done a good job and they're totally engaged with the community.
Yes, it's nice for informational, to have all this information, even though I can't read half of it, but, um, but we'll have that. Um, I do have a question that might not have to do with the sign ordinance, maybe the businesses might want to know this uh, with the legacy grant we have.
Yes.
For the town, or the signs included in that? I'm only asking this because American Legion asked me the other day.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
So you can get your signs replaced on your buildings through the, through the legacy grant.
But I do, I do want to caution that I highly doubt that they would replace, uh, like electronic digital display, because this is the historic district.
Yeah, well, the, the only reason why I said that is they were coming to the town, they asked for the, for the allegiance sign, they're going to change the allegiance sign out front again, but not to digital, but to.
Yep.
Somewhat like it is before.
I did speak with him, unfortunately, the funds are exhausted this year.
Yeah, for this year, that's fine, I mean, I didn't know if they all knew that or not, but signs are included.
They are included. And for those who are still confused, one more thing, Mr. President?
Yes.
Please give me a call, I'm open for appointments at any time, um, I'm here for you all.
There are meetings in April?
Yep, there are meetings in April, we'll get that published. Um, we love your suggestion to change the time, uh, Mr. Sun, thank you for that, appreciate that, um, we will change that.
Yeah, the, the meetings for this will be April eighth is for the Village Zone, April fifteenth is for institutional, April twenty-second is R-one, R-two, and R-three, and April twenty-ninth is B-one, B-two. What's IP?
Industrial Park.
Industrial Park and, and ORI. And it's nine o'clock to noon here, we tell, right here in this room.
That's correct.
And they're going to make other times.
And there will be times in the evening for residential. These are mainly for, to help the businesses, you can come down to them in the morning. Does anybody else want to speak on the ordinance, sign ordinance for tonight?
Ooh, ooh, me, me. Just a question, can we get out to the, the folks, the, the districts that you just spoke of? R-one, R-two, Village Zone, so people know what district, like the maps you have in front of you, is that available on the website for folks?
Yes, it is.
It is?
I think you're going to put it in the water bills, correct?
That's also going in the water bill?
The newsletter, there, the dates, the informational sheet will go in the newsletter, the zoning map is on our website.
Awesome.
I believe it's on ninety-nine as well.
Thank you.
I did have one more question, just, just real quick. It was regarding the grandfathering.
Columbo.
Columbo, yeah, just one more, just one more.
One more thing, one more thing.
Um, section thirty-eight point zero one zero, the, um, applicability, applicability? Is that the grandfather clause, so to speak, of this ordinance?
Um, the grandfather clause would be under seventeen thirty-eight two hundred.
Two hundred.
Non-conforming signs. So we'll speak into that in greater lengths in the future, but however, I'll sum it up quickly.
Okay.
If it is a legal sign that was permitted, that does have a permit, or for example, the outhouse has been around for so long, it was before any of this ever happened, they would be grandfathered in.
Correct.
So we will not take any signs away if this is passed unless it was not permitted, it is not legal.
Okay. As long as everything's, you know, they got the permits in place.
Exactly.
Everything's good to go. Now, if they change that sign in any way, then?
There are, there are requirements in that non-conforming section.
Or a new owner takes ownership.
That would be grandfathered in.
That's grandfathered in as well, okay. And that's based upon another ordinance, code, charter, is that somewhere in our?
Um, for non-conforming?
No, if, if, if another owner took over, let's say. So business has a sign out that's grandfathered in.
Yes.
And then someone else takes over that business, is it in writing that the new business owner is grandfathered in?
Let me check the non-conforming, let me check if it's in here, I don't know if it's in.
I don't know if it pertains specifically to this ordinance or if it was an over.
I believe.
Part of our code.
I'm pretty sure, ninety-nine percent sure, it is in the zoning ordinance already about non-conforming anything. Um, you know, property line distance, et cetera. So I can get that for you, but it's in there, because I've read it before. But we're just putting it in there again to let people know we're not going to take away your signs.
It's in the old one now, and they're going, they want to put it in the new one also.
No, that's great, you know, as long as we, I think if we hashed that out, even, even in April, even though we're not discussing this, just somewhere, so it's.
And one more thing, this extra protection for the residents and business owners. Um, Amy Nail, the code enforcement officer, and myself, before this, or right after this gets passed, we're going to go around and take a picture of every single sign. It's not because we're trying to get people in trouble, it's for their protection, we're going to create a non-conforming list. So if I would move to another job, if Amy would move to another job, Kathy, it's in writing, we have it on record that states what is already legally in existence. So there will be no discrepancies in the future, and that is written into that code.
Institutional memory.
Cool. Is that, was that discussed at the EBPA meeting, or?
I, I believe so, I don't, I don't think we discussed non-conform, I know we discussed grandfathering. It's the same thing as non-conforming, just different term, all right.
Anything else on the sign ordinance before we go on to the next agenda item? Speak now, I know you want to, you want to wait some more. All righty, let's go into number four. Community Park, Botanical Garden, for discussion. Wayne?
Thank you, guys.
And Sandy, can you come up and give your name and your, and your, where you're from?
Sandra Adams, sixty-six Robindale Drive.
And Wayne Slaughter, sixty-six Robindale Drive.
So, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to discuss a proposal to enhance the half-mile walkway path in Emmitsburg Community Park by adding some colorful native plants and flowers. Um, for this proposal, um, we're envisioning a community-based staged approach that could be taken to add a variety of native plants over time, um, to install some signage to identify plants that are, that are already there, and to, um, possibly evaluate removing some invasive vines that are, um, in the area. And, um, the use of Maryland native plants, um, supports the ecosystem and wildlife, including, um, birds, bees, and butterflies. Um, native plants support agriculture by, um, hosting and attracting pollinators. And this could provide volunteer hours for, um, students, scouts, in the community.
Um, I don't know if Mount St. Mary's has a horticulture, do they have horticulture? At, at Mount St. Mary's College, do they have any?
I don't believe so.
They don't have horticulture out there, their business?
I don't believe so, I know that the Grotto has a horticulture specialist, but that's for the.
I, I meant for volunteers for the, for activities, I know the high school does.
Right.
The high school, like, the, the doctrine high has, they, they used to.
The high school does, but.
Probably ever since Dr. Meredith retired, it probably not at the Mount.
Off of the Mount, I know, I think the high school has it, maybe we can get the high school kids, they have to do some community service anyways.
Would be great.
For their, uh.
Yeah.
The high school does have a horticulture class.
No, but Mother's Seaton School. You can, if you want to become a Maryland scholar.
Oh, okay.
You can, but that's not required of all graduates.
Not a shame.
But Mother's Seaton School does.
Yeah, well, we're very interested in working with, um, you know, people in the community and, and definitely, like, casting a broad net to help people become interested in this, it, it would definitely have to be like a, um, volunteer effort. We want it to be community, um, based, community to have an interest in it and, and the community out there enjoying the, um, beauty.
How will we buy the plants?
We figure the, um, most of the purchasing will be done through donations. We'll probably start up making the initial donations. And we've made contact with, uh, it's Blue Water, is it?
Blue Bo- Blue Water Baltimore, their advocacy for the, um, Chesapeake Bay and waterways throughout Maryland. They do a lot, and, and they're just one of many organizations that work with, um, the environment, enhancing, enhancing the environment by, um, promoting planting native plants.
And we would make our purchases through them. We've already sent them our specifications, and they're going to give us a list of plants that they think would be, you know, appropriate for the area and costs associated with them.
Okay.
So we would make those purchases through them, they're going to be bulbs, I think, instead of plugs, is what they call them.
And, and we, we have, you know, we walked the area many times, and, um, we walked with a master gardener that identified several plants that are already there, I mean, there are black-eyed Susans, there are, um, native plants that are already present, so we would, you know, definitely want to work with the environment there and enhance the environment by adding more diversity and, um, you know, more host plants for pollinators and things like that.
I would, um, really encourage you, maybe finding some volunteers at the senior center, but I was wondering how we're going to keep it from getting vandalized.
Well, we didn't see it as like a specific area, I mean, there are already plants along the pathway, and so we saw this as just, you know, enhancing what's already there instead of having like beds that could be vandalized. So I don't think, I, I don't think it's any more prone to vandalism than, you know, the way it is now, basically.
The advantage you have is that if it does serve as a draw, the more people who participate in it or enjoy it, you, you see vandalism diminish, um, and I'll, I'll speak from what I know about the trail. There are times when vandalism occurs, like someone will dump something up there, or there's a bottle thrown on the trail purposely, you know, to have glass there for bike tires and such. Um, i- i- it's going to happen, but if you do something well enough, it draws enough people that that's your enforcement and that's your protection. It will happen. Um, you know, the bad things are going to happen to good people, unfortunately. But i- i- it can be mitigated by the quality of the effort. Um, and, and I would say this, just, you know, sort of from a brass tacks piece. I know that you can rally your volunteers from all sources, I mean, I've had a lot of success with what we've done on the trails. Um, so I know our community, you know, there are entities that exist that are invisible now, that suddenly surface out of nowhere, like, yeah, we're a group, we want to help you, great, um, it does happen. I'm not afraid of competition yet, but, uh, uh, it definitely, you know, a, a very worthy endeavor, I think seven hundred dollars is a reasonable starting point. Uh, the only other suggestion I would ask for consideration on your part would be, um, I wouldn't say necessarily, you know, officers in the organization, but a chain of command, so there's some continuity with it, you know, as, as we age out on some of these things in time, you know, we want to see these things be, you know, we want to see these things continue. So just, you know, food for thought. But it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I think it is, too. Um, I don't have a problem, do we, you need a motion to accept the proposal, Mr. President?
I, I have a question.
Commissioner Ritz?
Are, are we, yeah, are we, do we, are we as a board approving this, or is, is this?
Kathy, you want us to approve this as a, a motion?
I thought it was for discussion.
I thought this was a discussion, I know.
It says on the agenda for discussion, I think there's some, some, still some questions, um, I don't know that there.
Will it?
You know, it needs to be some sort of agreement in place between the parties at the town and the parties involved, volunteers. You know, there's the liability when they're doing work on town property, you know, the purchasing of stuff, is there, um, you know, permits involved, because it, it, part of it is a flood plain, part of it's not, depends how far they go out. I mean, I think it's a great project, I certainly am willing to, you know, looking forward to working with you on it. But I think there's a lot of things that, you know, have to be taken into consideration, um, before it's approved.
What timeframe were you looking to begin?
Well, there's going to be a spring planting.
Okay.
Probably sometime one by late April, May. Uh, you don't want to slip too far after that.
True.
We were of the opinion earlier that some of this could be done in the fall as well, and we've heard otherwise, I think, in our contacts with Blue Water.
Yeah, Blue Water really recommended the spring planting, but, um, you know, in my experience as a gardener, I've planted in the fall and, and, you know, things go well, but anyway, um, you know, it would definitely.
So that's the timetable as it is right now, we're looking at trying to get started in the spring, if we do planting. The other thing is, is to just start cleaning up, you know, I mean, that's an alternative, there's a lot of fallen wood, down stuff, there's just things that needed to be cut back, and, and then the, the question would be, well, what can we do and be sort of within the letter of the regulations associated with it?
Would we need board, um, approval ultimately of, of this project?
If there's an agreement, yes.
Okay.
Board has to approve the agreement.
The other piece is we might want to direct staff to work with, um, Ms. Adams and Mr. Slaughter, you know, to set up timelines, boundaries, and guidelines.
I can work on an agreement.
Staff says she can work on an agreement? Are you guys willing to come in during the daytime?
Um, I'm available, Sandy and I, we can work out something, I'm sure.
What I can do is try to put a draft one together and send it over, you, you can take a look at it.